Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Work Session. My name is Wanda R.D. Williams. I'm the Chair and all of Council members. This is Tuesday, June 18, 2019. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:00, I mean 5:40. I want to announce today we have an executive session to discuss legal issues pertaining to the City of Harrisburg. Moving on, Mr. Patrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here, thank you. Before we begin tonight, we have some visitors in our audience who would like to address us and speak on behalf of the National Bank for Infrastructure. Would you please come forward, Mr. Stewart Rosenblatt?
It's going to be these two young-
Okay, you can sit here, please, and identify who you are. Do you have additional copies that you could- okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We really appreciate this opportunity to start off your meeting this evening. My name is Stan Forzek. And a little bit of my background, so you know, I'm a retired executive from Amtrak. I spent over thirty years there. I was the first Director of Finance for the Northeast Corridor. I was the first Director of Operating Strategy for the Northeast Corridor, and I ended my career in 2010 as the Principal Officer of Energy Management on a national scale. I've also worked as a Vice President for an energy consulting firm, and I was an Acting Chief of Staff for a small or mid-sized engineering firm in New Jersey. And the reason why we're here this evening is because amongst several different crises across the country, there is one crisis that we feel very strongly about, and the nation faces it on a daily basis, and that is an infrastructure crisis. Every city that we've been to, we've talked to a lot of people up and down the Northeast Corridor, as far west as Illinois and Ohio. There are urban areas that need new water supply systems, new sewer supply systems, because they're falling apart. New highways are needed, new bridges. We don't have high-speed rail, but yet other countries do. And the crisis is being compounded because, take a water system which is putting out lead to our children, all right? Do we want them to be drinking leaded water? No. Do we want to fix highways so that they have a better system when they grow older? Yes. There was an article on CNN this morning that was talking about the education of our children. There is a vast majority of children in children's schools that don't have broadband or Internet. These are all portions of infrastructure, and they have to be created. We estimate that it's going to take seven, excuse me, four trillion dollars to afford to upgrade all of the infrastructure in this country. We have to remember that in the 1850s, which is the 19th century, up until about the 1930s, which is the 20th century, was when most of our infrastructure in urban areas was built. That's 150 years ago in some places. It's now the 21st century. We've done nothing about it as a nation. Other nations that crumbled underneath World War II rebuilt their infrastructure and put in high-speed rail in the late 1960s and 1970s. It was only 50 years ago. We're still talking about infrastructure that's 150 and 100 years old. We have to do something about it. One of the reasons why we came up here today is because we recently got an endorsement and put it through from the City Council of Trenton, New Jersey. We've also talked to Jersey City, New Jersey, Carney, New Jersey. We've talked to people down in Washington, D.C., whether they are a representative or a senator. We've talked to them all. And the main crux of the problem, everybody agrees, and I'm sure, I'm watching every one of you, and you're nodding your head, yeah, there's an infrastructure problem, but the problem behind that is no one knows how to fund that problem. We're talking about four trillion dollars. If we leave it to the appropriations process that's in place in the United States right now, all right, everybody's going to fight for a certain amount of money, and there will be projects that never get done, all right? We're here because we would like you to endorse us so that we can get legislation to move forward, all right? Right now, there's a stalemate. We want to put in National Infrastructure Bank. We want legislation for it. It would take the appropriations process away. It's a very simple process. It was created by Alexander Hamilton at the end of the Revolutionary War. It was continued by John Quincy Adams. It was continued again by Abraham Lincoln, and FDR was the last one that actually had an infrastructure bank. We want to recreate it. I spoke about every, all of the nations built their infrastructure in the 60s and 70s. The model that they use to fund their infrastructure improvements and put in new infrastructure is the same National Infrastructure Bank that was created by Alexander Hamilton. And all we're saying is, we would like to put through legislation to do that. I know you don't have a lot of time. We have a copy of an article that I wrote for New Jersey Municipalities Magazine in their May issue. We have, we have a scan of that, and it's in our handout. I urge you to take the opportunity to read it, because it describes the National Infrastructure Bank and the state of our crumbling infrastructure. That's all I want to say right now, but we would come back at any particular point of time and discuss this further, because we want to get as many municipalities and cities behind us.
My name is Angela Vu. I'm a grassroots organizer from Northern Virginia. I serve on the Steering Committee for Our Revolution, which is the Bernie Sanders Group that serves for congressional districts, and I'm a leader of the, one of the leaders of the National Infrastructure Bank. I wanted to let you know that we have succeeded in getting seventeen state legislatures to file resolutions for the bank. Three have passed, South Carolina, Alabama, and Illinois. We did get past the Trenton City Council and recently, last night, actually Akron. The thing that I am focused on beyond just the crumbling infrastructure in the United States, on how this has affected the entire fabric of our society. We have not had a comprehensive big program since the Kennedy Space Program. Since the 1970s, we've launched into the post-industrial society, where we no longer have an economy that benefits everybody. The wealth is now in the hands of the upper 1 percent. And as a result of not only our bridges, our transportation, our water system, our schools, everything else that is in crisis, we now have a situation where we're now at .5 percent productivity. Wages are stagnant. The poverty in the country is about forty million people. We have opioid and drug overdoses off the charts. This is all a result of the takedown of the physical economy. One of the places that we did get the resolution passed was the Democratic Municipal Officials. This is forty thousand elected officials in the United States. This then went on to the DNC. They passed a resolution. So momentum is building. The problem, the roadblock in this, is actually the U.S. Congress. So we have to apply pressure from the states and cities. And I can tell you is that everywhere that we have testified, in the cities and the states, as soon as we call for federal funding into the cities and states, we've got everybody's attention, because as we sit through the excruciating, you know, detail of how the cities and states can't fund what is required except for Band-Aid solutions, whether they're water filters, Narcan, you know, the list goes on and on, as soon as we say that we need a Franklin Roosevelt program to get, in an emergency way, federal funding into the states, this is life and death. If there's ever a national emergency that should be declared in the United States, it's now. We are in a situation like 1933, when you have American citizens that see no alternative, no way out of their situation, except to kill themselves. That is a national emergency. Thank you very much for letting me testify.
You're welcome, Ms. Vu. Any questions, Councilmembers?
Are there any questions?
Any questions?
If I may, I'd like to indulge you and make one more comment.
Sure.
It's not just about money. A National Infrastructure Bank that would fund these projects would also give us the opportunity to put 25 million folks back into the workforce for high-paying jobs, union wages, and they would get things done. We'd like to come back at some particular point of time, when you have more time-
Sure.
-to go over this in more detail. We appreciate your time and hope to see you soon.
Thank you. And I look forward to contacting you, to come back to give us more information on that, and when we have more time to question you on the shortfall.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Moving on with the committee business. Moving on to Resolution 39, 2019, I will now turn it over to our Chair of Economic Development, Ms. Bowers.
I'm Building and Housing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking right at your name. I'm sorry, Mr. Mattson.
Have him read it into record. Oh. Mr. Patrowski, did you read the resolution into the record?
This is yours, huh? It's in Building and Housing.
I know it. I put it in. But I put it in Daniel. That's what I thought, Ms. Bowers. I gave it to you.
I know, but you said economic development.
I'm sorry, Building and Housing.
That's why I think everybody's stupid.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Resolution 39 of 2019 is a resolution ratifying a professional service agreement with Civitas LLC for the purpose of providing HUD technical assistance and training related to IDIS systems management for the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. If you could please provide a little bit of background. I know that Civitas didn't submit, I guess, a formal RFP, but just some background for everyone, please.
Civitas?
Civitas LLC is, was recommended by HUD. We need IDIS training in order to reconcile our financial records through IDIS. They were hired by HUD specifically just to help us with the general admin reconciliation from 2000 until the present, and then we have to have them help us on the project side to reconcile all of our funding in IDIS from 2000 until the present date.
I do have a few questions, but I'll open it up to my colleagues first. Councilwoman Daniels?
Yes, could you-
Good evening.
Good evening. Just for, just summarize the terms of the agreement, if you could.
It was just for four-day training. Four-day intensive training to help us reconcile our, our IDIS books, no, nothing else in addition to that.
Okay, and, sorry, how much is that going to be?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize. I believe it was around $4,500.
It's $12,000.
It's $12,000.
Is this Civitas?
Yes.
And it's for three days.
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. I apologize.
And I have it.
Thank you for your patience, Council. I apologize.
It's okay.
Civitas is, has provided three-day IDIS training session. That's what that was originally for. It was extensive, nine, from eight hours per day. In addition, I forgot, we did add this in because HUD suggested that the, we might need all continuous reconciliation therefore, right after. So we, we estimated, I forgot the hours, I'm sorry. I did not realize this was on, this one was on the agenda. Help me.
The contract does provide for ongoing training. So the initial amounts, I believe, was in $4,000.
$4,500 for the initial training, I remember that. Oh, that's right.
And then there's additional training that's remote, so they would perform that off-site, and that's at $135 an hour within not to exceed amount of $7,500.
And just for the record, just so everyone knows, IDIS is the specific HUD reporting system that we have not been able to reconcile, apparently they said since 2000, year 2000. And they felt that in order to build staff capacity, that we had to have a three-day training to build staff capacity, and that because of the length of years that we were covering, we may need additional support as we, as we actually reconcile those books.
So we're going to have to go back and reconcile ten years' worth of information once the training happens?
Yes.
Okay.
We're doing that internally. We had to build staff capacity to do that.
Okay. And do you know why, I know you're Neo, but do you have any idea why we had the, that capacity within our staff earlier? Between 2010 and now.
I, I know, I'm sorry. I don't. All I, all I knew is that we had funding that we had to allocate and correct, and projects that remained open since 2000. And, and we, again, HUD sent technical assistants first for our, one specific part of it, which is our general admin line, and then we, they realized we needed, we had a lot of projects outstanding that we needed to, additional training, and we just internally, none of us had the capacity to actually correct, do all that corrective action. So it was at their recommendation that we have an in-house training so that we can build our capacity and use them as support as we correct those items.
And so then, so you have the training, as you're reconciling, you'll have questions? You will have the ability to call them and say, hey, I need help with this?
Yes, we have the ability to email them and to call them, yes.
Does the contract max out at a certain value? What's the-
Yes.
Maxing out value?
So the remote training maxes out at $7,500. The initial training that was done onsite-
$4,000.
That was $4,500. So, yeah, so it's a max of $12,000-
Okay.
-including the onsite training and the remote training.
And do you foresee kind of the training for the, using this reconciliation tool, helping us be better grant applicants in the future?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. It's necessary for all of our reporting, our consolidated plan, our action plan, our K-Pers. All of those numbers are reported in that system. Every project that we fund is reported in that system and kept tracked on a grant accounting basis. All of our admin dollars are accounted there. So it not only, it not only does our fiscal piece, it also is our reporting piece to HUD. And all of those things are necessary so that you don't put your funding at risk, and you have specific deadlines for those. And everything must be submitted through the IDIS system. We do not have the luxury anymore just to send it via email to your grant technical representative. It must be submitted through IDIS.
Okay. Do you know when that requirement kicked in?
According to the REG, it kicked in about six years ago.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Majors?
Thank you. I'll defer most of my question. I'm sure Council Chair Bowers has a lot of questions, but how many employees will be receiving the training?
All the, five. Five people will be receiving the training, myself, the Deputy Director, and Asset Management Team, which is three members.
All right.
The other team members don't really do any fiscal reporting.
Okay. And then, so, and then, but we'll also be, just so I'm clear, we're reconciling since 2000.
That's correct.
So that's eighteen years of-
Yeah, we found that when we opened it, we had items as old as 2000, correct.
Okay. When was, when was this found?
I discovered it when we did the first meeting with them during the general admin time, which was a few months ago.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll defer any additional questions I have, members.
I'm sorry, I can't speak on anything prior to my being here.
I'm not asking you to, I'm just trying to get some clarification. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Allott?
One question I have. How did we select Civitas? I see that they're a HUD-approved vendor. Is there, do we do a little RFP process, or how did we go about this?
No, for this specific item, we did not do an RFP process. It was HUD recommended that we, they were HUD-selected. They are a HUD technical assistance provider specifically with IDIS.
And had anyone on our staff had prior IDIS experience before, or no?
I mean, all the staff has had limited, limited experience. Unfortunately, we were not doing it correctly. Therefore, for example, if we report something as public facilities, but it's a public service, it causes that item and those funds to be, to stick on the account and not to be able to draw down. And then we, because you have to have beneficiary information in order to close out all items. And so if we don't input it correctly and say, this is what we're doing with this project, then it has a long-term effect on the funding. And those, and if it sits on the books, you have things called CDBG timeliness. At certain points, we are supposed to have drawn down or spent certain money. It affects our timeliness. It affects the funding going from year to year, you know, ESG. All, all the regs have a different timeline. So CDBG has its own timeline, ESG has its own timeline, and so does home.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. President Williams?
Thank you. So the training has already been done?
That's correct. We did that last week.
Okay. And what was the reason for this training? Were there inaccuracies that were found by HUD?
Yes, through their monitoring, their monitoring reports that we received March 22.
And was this done prior to you coming here?
Was, what done, the findings?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So now that the findings have been corrected, how do we move from here and make sure that the individuals that you did train will not make those same mistakes?
Well, the good news, we are able to capture all of this in our policies and procedures now, and we also are putting desktop procedures in place for all employees. So however this affects, whatever your job is, if you're the one who inputs it, we all have desktop procedures now to capture those. So if anyone's out, we, we can actually do it. Anyone can step in and do it. We also doing a lot of cross-training. So if, if one staff member's out and she does the inputting or the approval, we have things in place to make sure we have other people looking at it, able to do that as well. And we are still making corrective action. We have not corrected all of the items in HUD's monitoring report yet, but this was to address the capacity issue and the IDIS corrective actions.
Were we in jeopardy of losing any funding regarding this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What type?
We were in jeopardy of losing-
In what area?
The CDBG, the CDBG sub-recipient, because we were not meeting our timeliness, timeliness requirements.
That's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Matts?
Yeah, I guess more of just a statement than a question, but it sounds like we haven't been in compliance with HUD's regulations for an extensive amount of time. And I think that it's vital that we get to the bottom and get training and make sure that we are starting on a path towards compliance, because this is certainly disheartening to hear that we've gone this long without training, and it seems good tracking records for the federal government, so.
Thank you, and we believe so too. We believe that this, you know, we realized we had to get to the root of everything and, in order to address every finding so that they don't become repeated findings.
Yep. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Green.
I just have a couple of questions. So you said HUD specifically recommended Civitas to us? Thank you.
They, they actually provided them as a technical assistance provider for us earlier in the year on the general admin, specifically for the general admin dollars, yes.
Okay. And if we've been, we have documents dating back to 2000. Is a three-day training enough to suffice to get us up to speed, to be able to provide to do what we need to do?
Well, it was really an intense twenty, you know, three days. We worked really hard those three days. We recognize it helped us understand the basics and making sure that we're reporting properly, but we also know as we make corrections, we do need some, we may need some assistance and be able to follow up and email them or call them, and that's why we had the added piece.
Okay.
But we do believe based on HUD's recommendation, and I do believe based on the staff capacity, doing it this way, this should be, this should be enough to get us up to speed and make sure that we're able to move forward correctly, yes.
Okay. As far as the billing piece, it's $135 per hour. Everything's billed hourly. So if you send them an email, that's $135, or does anyone know is it four-hour billing or is it straight hourly billing? Because that can be eaten up really quick when anyone can email them.
I understand.
Are you saying if you bill, send them an email, they bill you for an hour?
An hour?
Yes.
Yeah, HUD won't tolerate that.
I was-
I'm asking, the way it's written-
Right.
It just says hourly.
I mean, I believe it's just on hour, and they do, they are required, like Neil said. HUD requires very detailed, detailed rates. I believe it's probably like in legal, you go point two out, two-five hours, point three-five hours. That's how, I haven't received a bill to that effect from them yet, but I believe those are the kinds of things I look for when I'm doing billing and before I approve an invoice, absolutely. And because they're communicating mostly with me and the other, the Asset Director, we can verify through our own emails and tracking, you know, what that is, because it's not anything outside of that. It's not like they have to do any, some research and development. Everything is in communication with us.
Okay. If we can just get something written as to how would we bill?
Tiffany's been dealing with them, so she, do you know the answer, Tiffany?
No, I don't.
We'll get your answer.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And then also, the training has already been completed. Is it a reason why it's being brought to us after fact? Because I mean, if we don't approve it, does that mean we've gotten something we don't pay for?
Due to the HUD findings, there wasn't time to bring it to council and to get the staff properly trained, and since they were at risk of losing funding, we went ahead with the contract.
We have an aggressive deadline of August 15 to get our K-Pers completed, our consolidated plans, our action plans, as well as address all the three letters of monitoring.
Okay.
And we knew that, and part of that requires reconciling, because all of that stuff is reported, and we could not wait. And in actuality, you know, I, as you mentioned, it was urgent.
Okay. I feel like we should have been alerted a little ahead of time. I mean, we have meetings every week. Things get put on the agenda last minute often, so this could have been put on the agenda. That's no fault of yours. I don't know exactly who the fault falls on, so it's for everyone here. I think we need to be alerted beforehand, not that we're getting bills after the fact that it's kind of like, well, pass it because it's already been done. Because if we don't pass it, then it kind of puts a bad name on us that we've gotten the services and now we're, we're looking to, like, it's almost like we're talking about something that's already done. Why are we talking about it? So that's, that's my, my piece there.
Thank you for your comments. I completely agree. I wasn't aware that it occurred last week. So I guess I have two, well, maybe three, follow-up questions. Is there any documentation to ensure that the five employees that received the training, are they certified now in IDIS?
We don't get, it's not a certification class. I'm sorry, Councilman Bowers, it's not certification.
Was there a record of attendance and participation?
Absolutely, we have an agenda. We have an agenda that we can be glad to share-
Okay.
-that we follow. We didn't go off agenda, so I'll be glad to share the agenda.
Thank you. My second question is in reference to the remote training. Since the three-day training has already occurred, is there a plan to address the remote training, or is it just periodic, as you mentioned?
No, we have not yet. I haven't created a plan, because I wanted to get through this process once I realized it was on the agenda. So I have not made contact with the consultant again yet to come up with that strategy.
Okay. Do you anticipate contacting them before your deadline of August 15?
Absolutely, I would have to in order to rec, I believe so. We are already taking notes on and begin using some of the training, but we have a list of things we have questions on, but we have not taken action on that yet.
Okay. And then my final question is in reference to the August 15 deadline. At this point, it's what, June 18? How would you say you're progressing with everything that you have to meet by that deadline?
We actually doing much better than expected.
Okay.
I, I don't have any reason to believe that we won't make those deadlines at this point. We, we talk to HUD every Thursday at 9:00, you know, and give them a play-by-play. They give us technical assistance as well to help us get, stay on task and to help us prioritize what needs to get in when. So I think we're, I think we're in good shape.
Okay. Well, I would like to see a copy of the remote training plan, once you've prepared it.
Okay. Remote training plan? Okay, I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other comments or questions?
Yeah. When did we get the contract?
Tiffany, when did we get the contract?
Um, I'd have to look back at the contract log, honestly.[1780.32]
Here, Neil, when did we get, when did we get the contract?
Tiffany, when did we get the contract?
Um, I'd have to look back at the contract log, honestly. It would have been sometime mid to end May.
Oh, mid?
I believe. But I'd have to go back and look, honestly.
And you were able to share that with councilwoman too?
It wasn't, it, we hadn't embedded it or anything.
Oh, okay.
Isaac had helped negotiate part of it, so it was right around when he was coming on board.
Okay.
I think I saw Councilman Majors and Councilwoman Daniels. Did you?
Just the source of the funds to pay the 12,000.
CDBG. CDBG. In the CDBG line, we, we have a professional services line available because we knew that we had to build capacity, and oftentimes, actually, the chart of accounts over the last four years always included that for support.
Okay.
Madam President, if I may, just, just, because there's a lot of history with the CDBG and the entire federal system, and, and the records are far from perfect to go back to this distance. There has been tremendous amount of work. Brian McCutcheon has worked endlessly trying to reconcile things that happened long before he got here about how things are accounted for and whether they were properly accounted for, whether an administrative expense was an administrative expense. Those are challenging things to do when you don't have the people that did them. I mean, it covers three administrations that go through it. I don't know if there's something for every single year, but what happens is after five years, you don't have access to the money. But if you thought of your budget that's annual, and then you, we told you it's going to stay open for five years, which happens with the federal money. So in your year right now, you have these other years that are still open, and you're trying to make sure they're accounted for each year, and then someone who worked on something that left didn't close out something they did. And then you have to certify to them that you're doing it right. You have to find a person who can certify this. So it's, it's, it's a complicated process that's trying to be fixed different ways. We have had two, at least, if not three vendors that we've ended up having to break contracts with, end contracts for non-performance that cover both the Thompson administration and this administration for non-performance and giving bad advice. The, the one that I think probably most recently jumps out to you was the police car advice that we could do that. I mean, but we've had a series of those where you're sort of dependent on the people that are in that world with staff that gets training related to them and related to HUD. So, you know, there's been a long sort of circular process. You have the, the beginning when you're getting an award, it's a multi-year award. You get advice that this is how you do it. You get advice you're allowed to do it that way, and then you get auditors who come in from a different office from the federal government and say, no, you were supposed to do it this way. And then there's a reconciliation process. In my office, that record that goes way back just keeps repeating itself in a cycle for years with the federal money. And so we, we keep coming back to this, and the 2000 is an effort to finally take everything that's left that wasn't closed out and find a way to do it. It's not intuitive, it's not something people have direct knowledge of how it happened, but it affects our programs across the board, some of which don't exist anymore. We've gotten refunds on accounts that a source of funding doesn't exist, and then they try to figure out where it goes, because there was a contract that said if they sold the property early, they got to give us the money back. So there, there's a lot of, a lot of nuance that, that falls into federal regulation that's changed over time, including who the auditors are, what agency audit it. So, you know, this is sort of a best effort you can make. It's very hard to get it perfect when the rules keep changing from the time they gave the money to the time you report on the other side. So there's, but there's been an awful lot of people who have come through the city trying to do this to get the money out to the people that need it. And frankly, that's usually, at least my observation, what the focus is in those offices, is there's staff in there who are fieldwork trying to get the money out to people that need it. And sometimes our weakness has been not having all the paperwork in order as they're doing it.
Well, I guess I want to be assured that, you know, our lead program was in jeopardy for a while there, and then now we're talking about CPG. So where are we at? Where do we stand at this point? Are we still in jeopardy of losing the CPG funding, or how, how, how's that? Where is that at?
Well, actually, you know, after our meeting with HUD two weeks ago, they, we agreed to build our internal capacity. This is part of it. The training was to do that and to communicate with them and to let them know how we were moving forward answering all of the monitoring as well as every report. And as long as we do that, we're not necessarily in jeopardy. We may, we may have, we may, we're trying to prevent having it reduced. They never said that we would be in jeopardy of losing all of the funding, but we are in jeopardy of having a reduction if we don't get these things cleaned up and get all those reports in by August 15th.
Well, there was some concern about us having to repay some money as well.
That is correct.
So where are we at on that, though?
Again, they've given us an opportunity, as long as we do these things and meet with them, show progress every week, we meet with them every, we talk to them every Thursday at 9:00 AM, they, we're fine. They're giving us advice, we're, on the one, the money that you're specifically inquiring about, we have two incidents where we just, they're giving us an opportunity to re-present the information, and that's what we're doing now. Part of that has to do with our annual plan, which is why we needed the IDIS training as well, because we have to have our caper and annual plan in order to be able to re-present that information and ask them for reconsideration. So they are giving us an opportunity to request reconsideration instead of losing those funds.
Okay. Are we taking accountability, the sub-recipients that receive this money? Are we making sure that we're holding them to the application they fill out there utilizing the funds as they stated in that application?
Well, that's where we are right now. That's one of our biggest issues right now, and is that we're looking at all the sub, we had a lot of findings last week around our sub-recipient files and record-keeping and accountability and beneficiary information. So we actually are reaching out to all the sub-recipients to meet with them individually, to go over their agreements, to give them some forms and documents to help them better report, to give them the new reporting schedules and what's expected of us from HUD as the oversight authority. So there are going to be some changes on level accountability, yes, from the sub-recipients, and we are having meetings with them individually and visiting them on-site to assist them into, to assist them in assisting us in getting all the documentation so that we won't continue to have findings and won't put any of this funding at risk.
Okay. Well, in the future, if you could just keep counsel abreast, especially Ms. Bowers, as to anything that the HUD may find, if there are certain findings that they see that the City of Harrisburg is in jeopardy of losing any funding or any policies or procedures that we can help implement to help things move, you know, more secure and safely.
I appreciate that.
Because at this point right now, I don't want the City of Harrisburg to be in jeopardy of losing any money to the sub-recipients, and we haven't got a, an accounting of how much money we're going to get yet.
Yes, and that's the only reason we have, because we can't, we can't, we can't award 2019 until we address 2017 and 18.
Are we going back to 2017? Is there some discrepancies there?
Yes, ma'am.
So when will we clarify those?
Literally, I just, HUD just left last week. I just got all the files on Thursday from Romulus, and now I'm going through them with the deputy, and we're reaching out to all the sub-recipients with the checklist of the items we need.
So have they received any funding in 2017?
Yes. 2017 and 18, they have, yes.
Okay, they have received their funding?
Yes, and in order to make sure we don't put those fundings, that funding in jeopardy, we have specific items that HUD has requested that we receive from them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, councilmembers? I'm sorry, Ms. Bowers.
It's okay. Councilwoman Daniels, did you have?
Just, this is directed at you. Perhaps it'd be helpful if at some point the department had, were to do kind of a mini workshop and tutorial on HUD funds and the histories, because since we've been here, since I've been here, there has been, we've been in jeopardy of losing so many different types of funding and for different reasons, and, you know, we even have money, millions still tied up in future debt repayment. And I think it, it becomes a little bit, it, it kind of repetitive and, because nobody is really catching the problems when they should have been caught. And so it would be good to have, I think at the very least for council to have a, a little bit of a primer, because I think sometimes council members get information and don't realize the significance of it and then don't know what to do with it. So it would be, so having just a little bit of a primer for, for us would be useful at some point, obviously after August.
I'm looking for, I'm looking forward to, you know, writing, you know, capturing everything and writing not only for the administration but for council and the public, because at the end of the day, you know, they're federal dollars and it's our, we have to do our due diligence, and so that's something I'm looking forward to, but I can't report on it until I pull all the pieces together.
Yeah. Well, and I think when we're looking at information from 2010, some of that historical information, you know, even predates you, but that we're in a position that you in 2019 have to reconcile information from 2000. You know, and I have to say, like, I've never, I don't know if this is something that happens with municipalities, but I've never been with like a federal grantee where reconciliations went that far back, but they just haven't worked with municipalities that much. Usually you get, you know, if you fail an audit, they tell you what you did wrong, you fix, you have that year to fix it, then you move on to the next year or you don't get your money. And I've never seen this kind of thing before, so I don't know if this is just customary or-
No. Well, part of it, just if you don't mind me addressing it, part of it is, is that you have, CDBG is not like lead. Lead, every year I can see where we're supposed to be, and you have to take action quickly because it's a short span. CDBG, you actually can carry over every five years, and HUD looks at it, and then you can tell them, okay, we're going to reallocate that and want to use it later, and you can request permission. So the monies can sit there for quite some time. And we're not the only municipality who's had this challenge because of change administration, changes of staff and things of that nature. And, you know, but I discover, even with talking to HUD a lot, it's all about making sure we have good grant-based counting, accounting practices, not just with, you know, we have to do it first in our federal system with IDIS and how we report it, and then assist, and then work with our internal financial department to make sure that we're in alignment at all times. And it is a bit over, it could be a bit overwhelming if you're not really sure of all the regulations, et cetera. So we, based on HUD's recommendation and from our own observation, we knew that this IDIS training was the root of it. Otherwise, we would just keep covering it up, and we'd still be back at the same situation next year if we didn't get to the root of it and clean it all up.
I mean, in prior years, council was advised that we legally could, could allocate money to certain sub-recipients, and so what, in reality, what we found out is that we couldn't.
Yeah.
And so therefore, the sub-recipients have received the money, so I don't want that to be a problem this year as well.
We understand, and I totally understand, which is why one of the things we're doing is not only making sure we have everything right and order, but we, we are very clear. One of the things that kept coming up in our findings is making sure that anytime we give funding to sub-recipients or any project, that we, we have to verify to HUD first the eligibility and fundability of that project to make sure that it's, it's eligible. So you have to do that prior to even, you know, but you, before you can even say, okay, this is what I'm doing. You have to say, this is the project we'd like to do, this is the fundability, and you have to show the regulation that supports that it's an eligible and fundable project or program.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions, comments, concerns? Well, considering that this training has already occurred, I guess we have to move forward. I do have one final question. I noticed that the contract ends September 30th, so does that mean all of this remote training will be crammed into that time period?
Yeah, once again, we have an August 15th deadline, and that is the end of our fiscal year.
Okay. Okay. Moving on to Resolution 40. I guess I'm recommending it for vote reluctantly, but since it's already occurred, I feel as though we have to.
All right. Resolution 40 of 2019, it's a resolution ratifying a professional services agreement with Real Estate Strategies, Inc., for the purpose of providing technical grant assistance services to the City of Harrisburg's Department of Building and Housing Development to support its HUD-related programs and reporting requirements.
Thank you. Ms. Beeks, if you could please share the method or process that was utilized to determine the contract awardees for professional services?
Through an RFP process that went through the procurement or purchasing department.
Okay. Was there a rating or scale, or were there items specifically that you were looking for?
The RFP process requires that you have a, a scoring, which we're all, you have a committee, you have a committee and you have a scoring process. Again, that's all through the purchasing department, yes.
Okay. So how many responses did you receive?
I believe on this one, we received four.
Okay. Were there any local participants?
In the region, yes. I don't necessarily believe it was any in the City of Harrisburg.
Okay, thank you. This time, I'll start with Councilwoman Green. Do you have any questions or comments in this resolution?
Uh, just a couple of questions. One, I see that it includes writing. Is there any coordination with the planning department?
Yes, there will be. There will be. In fact, we're going to, the mayor's office as well as the planning department. I mean, you, prior, historically, we've kind of acted in a silo, and that's not really how it should work. So yes, we will include other departments, especially the administrate, the administration as well, in order to make sure that when we're writing our plans, our consolidated plan, annual plan about the spending of CDBG funds that we are speaking to all those departments, yes.
Also, is there a cap or not to exceed enough for this contract?
It's a little bit flexible. It, the proposal is that they will aim between 210 and 220 hours. There's a fee schedule on the very last page of here at the resolution. Depending who's working during those hours, there's different rates, and they anticipate, anticipate between $30,000 and $35,000 to complete it. If they go over the amount of hours that they have estimated, they will come back for approval from the city.
Okay. Is there some manner that says they will completely have to come back?
Yes, there is.
That's all the questions I have right now.
No question for me, thanks.
President Williams?
I'm sorry, I was looking for the fee page. Is it actually in the resolution language or?
No, it's the last page of the attachments.
I was slowing down on the screen, sorry. Oh, there it is.
There's, there's five team members who will be working, ranging in $175 an hour to $85 an hour.
And we're estimating between 210 and 220 hours?
Correct.
Okay. So between 30 and 35?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any other questions right now, thank you.
No, no questions.
Councilwoman Daniels, anything?
Yes, so I just want a little bit more clarity on what this service is. So in theory, our staff people would be doing, would be doing this work, but we're now contracting with-
Well, histor, historically, we've never done it internally.
Okay.
Okay? Most municipalities, they receive a lot more funding, spend a lot more money for consultants. The goal and objective is, again, even with a consultant, you still have to know what you're doing. You still have to be involved in the process. You still have to be able to look at whatever they're producing and make sure you're getting a good project, product. Historically, we haven't done that. So in this case, we're using a consultant, which is most, again, most municipalities don't have, even New York City, who has a nine million, gets nine million dollars plus in CDBG entitlement funds, they don't have the capacity to do it themselves. However, in this particular case, we absolutely needed, it's a 400-page document, we absolutely needed some support, but in this, instead of us allowing just the consultant to do it on their own and send it to us, we plan to work hand-in-hand with them and do a lot of conversing and, and to look at, to make sure it makes sense, make sure we're captioning and to look at, to make sure it makes sense, make sure we're captioning the demographics and the beneficiary information, and also looking at the old plans to make sure we're in compliance and we're doing what we said we were going to do.
So I, so that's the kind of what I'm trying to figure out. So our staff will in effect be doing the bulk of the work just guided by the consulting firm? Or the consulting firm will be doing the bulk of the work, getting advice from staff?
They're doing the bulk of the work. The go, I see it as they're doing the bulk of the work and meet with us every week so we can make sure that they're on task, questions being answered. There's going to be some things they have to ask that are very specific to the department, but most of it, they do, and then they bring me a draft so I can have something to work from, yes.
So do you see, do you anticipate like our staff receiving some kind of skill benefit or skill improvement from this relationship? And what do you think those skills are going to be?
Absolutely. One of the benefits we get, we get to learn how to plan and write and know how to connect all the dots. Typically, somebody works on a program and that's all they know, they only work on this. This way, we get to see the whole picture together as a team and get to see how each thing affects the other. That's very important, because if we're writing a consolidated plan or annual plan or planning projects or doing our program work, we don't know how that, how that fits into the whole consolidated plan. So it's important that we all know the big picture, we all know how it fits in, and we also are able to articulate that data and those, that data and beneficiary information that is specific to that project or program, because that's part of the process as well.
And will there be like meshing between this consulting opportunity and like, let's say the city's grant writer, like, how will those parties...
Historically, we have always had someone who works on the consolidated plans. And there's two ver- two versions, the short one...
Yeah, the consolidated plan and the five-year plan, then you have the annual plan, and then you have the caper which tells you that you've completed those plans.
Right, but there's been a consultant that's done those together, the, not the caper, but the other two, and they provide some technical assistance. And that has been that way here for decades, as far as I can tell, because it is the bulk of the technical information. They tend to be fairly comprehensive in what they are. And then the city's particulars are what they interact with to get to the city's particulars. And, you know, those are some of the issues that have come up with the consultants that I mentioned with the last two long-term contracts. The last one was up to five years. I don't even know, I think the last one was before that was up to four years. And both of those entities ended up where there was information that frankly seemed phoned in to the process, you know, which is what is the problem being addressed when you're relying sometimes on these outside professionals who say this is what they do. So, but it is a technical, large filing that happens every time.
Yeah, and I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out with the, you know, trying to think of like the long-term value, because I've had to look at, you know, the five-year plan, the annual plans for different cities, and they all end up being the same. It's basically the same plan that's replicated, just with slightly different data. So if there's, you know, if there's a way that in the long term, this benefits our staff, so we're not maybe necessarily paying as much on the consulting side for what's, you know, almost a replica of some other thing.
What happens is you, because it seems like a replica, because we all have the same questions to answer.
Yeah.
That's the first thing. We all have specific things we have to answer. Everybody has the same hundred questions, right? However, if you get a good consolidated plan, a good template for your city, then you just use that from year to year. So you use that from year to year. So yes, it is a good, it is a good benefit to the staff at large, because we have what we need, what I consider a good template to work from specific for our city. And you can use that data and that information for so many other things.
Well, that's the intention of it.
For applying for grants, you know, for applying for additional grants, for, you know, to do your annual plan and capers and any other reporting. So once you get a good consolidated plan that's specific for your city and your staff understands it and knows it as staff, we get to use that. We say, oh, help us, it helps us apply for other grants, as I said, additional funding. It helps us build partnerships. No, it really is a great needs assessment for us.
Yeah. No, I mean, those tools, they're really great, they're intended to be really good tools. It's just that municipalities have managed to do the least they could do with them. So, so I, I, I'm optimistic that this different approach will help us deliver a better product for our residents. I'm just trying to wrap my head around how, like, what that will look like or what.
Yes, thank you for that comment.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I'm just delighted to see it's a Pennsylvania woman-owned business that we do, that the company that we did hire, so that's, that, just wanted to make sure that they knew that.
I have one follow-up question. Is this time-sensitive?
Yes, once again, that's why we had so many go out at once, because we got all the letters, as I mentioned to you before, on March 22nd, and we were trying to address all of those concerns. And we knew that we had to build capacity and that we needed the support to make that happen quickly. And that's why we chose the RFP process, to make sure that we got, opened it up and got his, you know, all, got applicants that were in the, that, you know, we didn't rely on just, we didn't rely on just our own knowledge that we decided to RFP it out, yes. And so it is time-sensitive. This goes along with those, over that August 15 date. So we have a financial side, which was the training we just discussed, the other grant. This is more the narrative and the reporting side.
Thanks for clarifying. In that instance, since it's time-sensitive, I would recommend this resolution for a vote.
Ms. Bowers, if it's helpful, the last contract we had was actually supposed to expire June 30th with the vendor that we got into an agreement with. So they were supposed to carry a big piece of this through. And that was the plan. And then that, that became at odds because of some of the advice and some of the findings we got from HUD. So we had someone lined up, and then we had to go find someone new.
I should mention, though, the last consultant did, the consultant he's referring to, they did submit a plan on our behalf, and it was not approved by HUD. That was one of our findings. And we had to make modifications and corrections. And this is part of that process and addressing that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. We're not going to do Resolution 41. We're going to remove that from the agenda. But we are going to move on to Resolution 42, 2019. And I would turn it over to Councilman, Mr. Majors, Public Works Chair.
All right, let's see, which might read in Resolution 42 into the record?
Yep, Resolution 42 of 2019. It's a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an interim operational agreement with the Borough of Steelton to provide collection and disposal services for residential municipal solid waste and recycling and otherwise undertake the process to secure a long-term intergovernmental cooperation agreement.
All right, and it looks like we have individuals from our Public Works as well as Steelton Borough here. So if one turned over to, I had wonders coming up.
Probably good. I will introduce this by saying this is a really exciting and very positive development here for the City of Harrisburg and for the Borough of Steelton. We were approached by members of the Borough Council about the possibility of entering into an intergovernmental agreement to handle the trash and recycling for Steelton Borough. Operationally, it was the assessment of our Public Works Director and Deputy Director that we could do that, in part because collection for Steelton occurs on Wednesdays, which is otherwise the lightest day for, for the city. So we had the available capacity to take this on on Wednesdays. I, along with Council President and Public Works Chair Wes Majors, went to a Borough Council meeting and took questions from council members about how this relationship might work. And ultimately, I am pleased to report that their Borough Council voted unanimously to enter into an agreement with us. It is time-sensitive, and we're asking to move on this this evening because service would begin on the first week of July, which is only a couple of weeks away here. And we, just in terms of further detail there, the city will be assuming the billing responsibilities for, for the Borough of Steelton as well as the collection responsibilities. And there, there's some other details you may have questions about. But just briefly, want to, I, see, Aaron, do you have anything to add from a city standpoint?
First of all, I just want to just say, this is a wonderful opportunity. Not only are they our neighbors, you know, opportunity for us to actually show why it's very important for us to keep our sanitation department in the City of Harrisburg. Because, like I said, nobody does it like we do. I mean, the private sector is not like Ms. Betty's best friend. When Ms. Betty calls us, we come and pick Ms. Betty's trash up, you know. Again, what I love about it is, you know, Ms. Bowers, just happened, her father just happened to be a resident, you know, he's, he was a basketball player down, a superstar down in Steelton. Again, you got, we got employees that work for us that live in Steelton. So it works hand in hand. And not only, you know, we doing things for Steelton now, but we have done things for Pembroke when they ran out of salt. We've done things for Susquehanna, believe it or not. But we did run things for Susquehanna, cutting down some trees and things like that. So we always help the neighbors, always.
And Doug, would you like to speak to, it should be noted that Steelton Borough went first and voted on this last night, knowing that somebody had to go first, and perhaps you could...
Sure.
And then could you just do a quick introduction of yourself for the record?
Absolutely. Madam President, Members of Council, my name is Doug Brown. I'm the manager of the Borough of Steelton. We have been, we recently had an RFP process for our trash collection and recycling collection services. And quite frankly, our council and myself as manager were growing concerned about, A, the level of service that our customers were getting as well as the significant price increases that they were facing. So an intergovernmental agreement with the city seems to be a great option for us, and we're very thankful for the city being willing to partner with us potentially to do this. For our residents, I can tell you, last night, our Borough Council met. We unanimously passed the resolution to execute our side of the interim in our operational agreement with the city in order to provide trash service to our borough. Our borough is approximately 6,000 residents, around 2,500 households. We saw this as a win-win. For us, the pricing included in the proposal would actually only be a 55 cent per quarter increase, which is wonderful for our residents, as opposed to facing a, you know, $12 to $15 per quarter increase in the context of having some of the service issues that we've been having with our current hauler. So we were very excited to get this process started and to show that two governments, the city and your little neighbor down the river, can work together to provide exceptional service to our residents. And we're just thankful for the opportunity to partner with the city.
All right.
Yep.
So as I said, Council President and I had an opportunity to attend the initial meeting and have some conversations with members of council and hear, you know, where they were coming from, from their perspective as we're looking, they were looking to enter into this interim agreement. But first, I'll turn it over, I have questions, but I'll turn it over to, I'll start down to my far left with Councilwoman Bowers. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. I don't have any formal questions. I did just want to share a comment. Thanks for your presence, gentlemen, this evening. It just makes sense. It seems like a no-brainer. And I hope that this is the first of many intergovernmental cooperation agreements between the city and neighboring municipalities.
All right, Ms. Green?
I don't have any questions. I just have my colleague. This is a wonderful opportunity. It makes sense. It seems like it's a natural occurrence. So I look forward to it to be green.
Mr. Madison?
Yeah, agreed. I was actually talking with the President of Swatara Township, Tom Conley, about this very thing, about how we can coordinate better within municipalities and how we should try to do more of that. The only question I would have is, we heard a lot of the good things. What are some bad things or some things that should be of concern for the constituents either in Steelton or Harrisburg? Yeah, or any...
I don't think there's any reason to be concerned. I, I think that, I think that there was a level of dissatisfaction with, among the residents of Steelton that we heard about their, their current way trash was being handled in the private sector. There were some very disturbing anecdotes of, you know, fights and other, other unprofessional behavior. Whereas from the city standpoint, we, we have a professional team that goes out there every day and provides incredible service to our residents. And I think we're looking to extend that through the agreement. And I think both council members, Bowers and Green, are correct. This hopefully could set the stage for potential other types of partnership and not just with Public Works or sanitation, maybe, you know, in other departments. Police, fire, you name it. So we're hoping that this could be an example of what the future could hold for, for the region. But I, I don't think we see any drawbacks.
I don't see anything, I don't see no bad things. This is all positive. I mean, it's definitely doable for us. It couldn't happen on a better day. Wednesday is actually one of our lighter days. So it just, it just works right in there, you know. And then, you know, I know, we talked about this, Doug and Dennis, the city council back there, looking at Steelton's trash. What we talk about in Public Works, I mean, they got, they have clean trash. There might be a couple of spots that they have that, but they have clean trash. So for our sanitation guys, that's like, you know, you live for that. I mean, you just, the little cheap bags ain't busting, you know, that type of thing. So yeah, it's pretty, it's, it's, it's pretty decent down there, you know. It's pretty decent, so it's very doable. So like I said, when I, when Brian called me and asked me about, you know, the opportunity, I called the mayor right away. I was like, wow, you know. Again, it's just, it, it's, it's a, it's, this is a dream come true for real, because a lot of times, you know, people want to think that, they want to talk about outsourcing us, but that'd be a nightmare, you know, because these private sectors doesn't do what we do as far as for our citizens, and it's, and it's about our citizens. And they pay for the, you know, the trash to be picked up, and they want to be able to pick up the phone and call somebody and have their issues addressed. So, you know, that's why it's so important for us to actually have our own sanitation department and we can provide service to our neighbors, you know. This is a great opportunity.
Very good. One final question for the record. Did this require any kind of amendment to the collective bargaining agreement?
No.
No, okay. That's it for me.
Thank you.
I concur with, with my other members, but I had a concern too, how it will affect our union-covered workers. Will this unsettle the everyday process that they're following here in Harrisburg?
Well, I'm having a meeting with them tomorrow. We actually meet every Wednesday. But, you know, we're short of drivers right now. But we had our, had our interviews Wednesday and Thursday, so we get ready to fill those positions. So, and our, while we're short of drivers, three of the positions, they moved up to highway. So they got a promotion, if you want to look at it like that, they're MEOs. So we have to fill those positions. So with that being said, we have to split a route. So you know the guys, they spoiled, so they used to get in off at a certain time. Now you got to split the route, so that slowed down that rotation. But soon as we fill them positions, we'd be right back to normal. So, but it doesn't do anything, we, we're well within our contract, because you got to remember, we put the toter lifts on, on trash trucks. But again, our employees have to pick up 80 pounds. So, you know, Steelton don't have our trash toters yet. So they have the trash, we, we used to pick the trash up. So again, that's well within our contract.
Well, I'm just concerned that, you know, that the employees would say, this is unfair, because, you know, certain individuals who have an opportunity to leave early and then those who don't have to leave early. I don't want the City of Harrisburg to receive any grievances behind this move that we're making, you know, to collect their trash.
Like I said, I'm meeting with, I'm meeting with the, they're going to be at the meeting also. Because, you know, that's one thing about me, I have a good relationship with, with the union, and we transparent, but they get paid for eight hours.
I understand.
Yeah, they get paid for eight hours, you know, that's the, if they successfully complete their route, they can, but, you know, we get, they get paid for eight hours. And we already have our plan, who we sending down, and we, we actually having two trash trucks and one recycling truck. So we already got our, you know, our team of guys, and it couldn't happen on a better day, like I said, on Wednesday.
I agree. This is, this is a great agreement, you know, to provide service to smaller town, our neighbor and, you know, neighbors. And I just want to assure the residents of the City of Harrisburg that they will continue to see, you know, receive the best quality of service that we may provide, that there's no lacking of service to them because of our intergovernmental agreement with, with Steelton.
And I'm glad you...
And I assure you, I want Steelton to receive the same service that you provide to Harrisburg residents.
And I'm glad you're saying that, because it doesn't change anything. We have enough manpower, even though the drivers, we have, still have enough manpower, because, you know, we'll pull from a highway, you know. But like I said, we, we interviewed Wednesday and Thursday for the MEO, so we be filling those positions. And though it's not going to stop any service in Harrisburg, and right now, we're going to keep everything the same. Going into next year, we actually, we actually know exactly what's going on, because we were supposed to hire three drivers, but, you know, we had to cut our budget. So, you know, going into next year, we'll take a look at things, how, you know, what we need or whatever. But this is definitely doable, and you know us, we going to make sure that we provide that service. I mean, we, you know, we pride on, lay our hat on that.
How do you handle with bad weather in your seats?
Well, yeah, now, I, I know Councilman Madison asked that question. He said, you see any trouble? Now, you know, Steelton has some hills now.
That's, that's right.
Yeah, Steelton has some hills.
I slid the whole way down on Lincoln Street.
So, so I would say, I wouldn't say any issue, I'll say challenges. And we talked, I talked to Doug and Dennis about that. I asked them about their, their crew as far as their snow removal.
So how do we handle that to assure our, our workers are going to be safe?
Oh, well, again, we'll go out there and make assessment. Can we come down that hill? And then, you know, again, we would touch bases with them and say, we have to pick up the trash as soon as the weather is permitting, you know what I mean? But the alleys, their alleys is just like ours, you know, and the guys, you know, we plow them and everything. So, but it's the hills, definitely. We, that's the first thing we, we asked about that, yeah. Because we got, like I said, I have a couple of guys that live down there, you know. As the first, actually, he's going to be on one of the routes. So he's, he was saying about that, that hill, so.
So they can't go down there till seven o'clock, so you would send our crew down there at seven o'clock?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We follow their ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions?
Mr. Al.
No questions, just comment. I think this is an excellent path forward. I mean, we've talked for a long time...
mean, we've talked for a long time about the idea of having more regional cooperation on things, and we've often joked that we, we'd be open to it, but no one else is, so it's nice to know that we're, uh, going down this path. So, definitely a very supportive of, of these type arrangements, and, um, it's, I think it's goodwill between our two communities for sure.
All right, Ms. Daniels, any questions?
Um, yeah, uh, just for, uh, the public, could you give a little bit more details about, like, the terms of the, what the plan looks like? How many more household units will be added, you know, what the, what the rate is, et cetera, et cetera?
You sure, Deb?
Yep.
That's fine.
I can start then.
Yep.
If the solicitor would like to, uh, chime in. Um, so, for our residents in Steelton, uh, this, this agreement provides minimal disruption to the way things are done currently, uh, which is something that, uh, we are very excited about and something that we're grateful to the, to the team here at Harrisburg for, uh, crafting an agreement that is, uh, gonna kind of keep things until we gradually get into a longer-term intermunicipal agreement, kind of keep things from a service standpoint, sort of status quo for the routine and procedure. Um, our trash pickup days have always been Wednesday. Uh, they've been for, you know, over a decade or more. Uh, it would provide for up to four cans, uh, that can be picked up at the borough, or at each location. Um, we, our ordinance for that pickup would be up to 128 gallons total for four cans. Uh, one bulk pickup item, which is currently the level of service we have right now, um, as well as pickup of, you know, tree, if you have tree trimmings, things like that, that are bundled up to four feet. Um, the, uh, quarterly price for 2019 and '20 would be $75 per quarter. Uh, currently, our residents are paying $74.45, um, so it will be, again, minimal, minimal impact on them financially, um, which we're, again, very thankful for. Um, we have in the agreement as well, uh, the holidays that are, that would be, uh, agreed to, um, as well as a pickup, being a delayed pickup day for those weeks. Um, there is some flexibility in there for us to make the decisions. We need to on the ground as we kind of feel our way through some of the, you know, smaller items or things that may come up. Um, and there's also a 90-day, uh, opt-out in there in case either, either body felt like the agreement was not, or that the, the arrangement was not, uh, benefiting our residents, or that there were issues that either of our respective boards, uh, would think needed to be addressed or would cause for termination of the agreement. Um, so we believe it, for us, it provides the flexibility needed, uh, while we work out the longer-term permanent intergovernmental agreement or the long-term agreement, um, while keeping things the same. So that, that's from Steelton's perspective.
And, and how many housing units or residential units?
Uh, we have approximately, our count's, uh, 2,400 is kind of the rough number, a little bit over 2,400. Uh, now, we do have multi-unit accounts, so that bumps it up to more like, uh, 3,000 units. Um, in our ordinance, the, uh, we, we, our ordinance is residential pickup is considered, uh, any, any residence with up to three units in the residence, anything four and over is considered commercial, um, and that's it, privately contracted or a private, um, arrangement with a hauler of their choosing.
Okay, so we're not taking up the commercial stuff?
No, this would be just residential.
Just residential, okay.
Yeah, and just to reiterate what Doug said, which, all, which was correct, um, again, council members, it's only residential, it's not commercial, and, uh, this is an interim agreement. Uh, so when you came back, this is allowing us to have no disruption service to move forward over the summer, but when you come back from, uh, summer recess, you would, we would anticipate having a full-fledged, uh, uh, long-term agreement for you to vote on at that time. So, um, we, we've done a lot of due diligence. We feel very comfortable with, uh, with this where we are, and, and hopefully that answers all your questions.
That does, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, well, yes, I had a list of questions. Uh, Doug and, and everyone else did a good job of answering all those questions. Uh, the other, and just to make sure, so, the interim agreement is for, how long is it, a 90-day agreement, or?
So the interim agreement technically runs through December 31st-
Okay.
-or when the, uh, intergovernmental formal agreement is passed. Um, there is actually a State Intergovernmental Cooperation Act, which requires the two municipalities to adopt an identical ordinance. So that is the process when you come back from the end of the summer break. It's anticipated that, that the language of that identical ordinance will be available to be reviewed. Because there's fees involved, there'll be some advertising requirements under a different state law, so, you know, all of those things, which we would anticipate happen through September, maybe into early October, depending on the council's schedule and the Borough Council's schedule. Um, and that's, so the, but, out of caution, we took it to the end of the year-
Okay.
-in case there's any bumps in the road. Um, there are other pieces that you'll see this Friday. I expect you'll see a draft, uh, proposed resolution to reallocate funds to start this, because the funding is a quarterly billing. We will have to pay, um, the, the disposal fee at Lakswama upfront, so you'll get a, a portion of that, which the fee should easily cover, but we have to be able to pay that, 'cause there's no allocation for that. Um, there'll be a couple other items like that. We're still negotiating the security portion of it. For, there'll be a performance bond when it comes down to the intergovernmental agreement, but we've agreed to provide some form of security, whether that's an account with funding in it that's specifically designated for Steelton. Um, and there'll be a bank account set up, I believe, specifically just for Steelton for deposits to come in. So there's a lot of mechanical pieces that are to this, to make sure everybody, you know, it, for audit purposes, can see everything that goes on. Um, but, but there will be a, an allocation coming down with those requests, so that this would be carried out smoothly, uh, throughout the summer months as we're moving forward.
Okay, uh, and then, that leads to one of my questions. So in terms of billing, since they do do quarterly, you said we'll have everything, uh, sectioned off so that there'll be, there's no, uh, merging of any accounts, so Steelton will have a, an account set up within our system to be able to do the billing, so, or we'll be taking over their billing operations as well, correct?
Yeah, and we're gonna use different colored paper. Uh, Steelton's gonna have a special phone number, special email, uh, and, uh, the bills are gonna go out at different, uh, times. They're not gonna be merged with the regular Harrisburg City billing, so it's gonna be a separate, um, a separate process, and then the funds will go into a separate, uh, account when they're received.
Okay, um, and then, while we were at the Borough Council meeting, one of the other issues that came up amongst, uh, members of the council and just, I'm sure, since they do, since they're allotted up to four cans at, up to 128, and a lot of ours cans, we have, what, 95, 65, and a 40, 35. Uh, so, well, our, our rates, the rates won't change for them as long as they don't max out above 128, is that correct? Once we get the official, 'cause I know, we're interim, so we'll still be using their,
Yeah.
their trash bins until the, uh, formal agreement is signed.
That's right.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, we, uh, as of, uh, tomorrow, I believe we are going to have, uh, examples of the, of the totters at the Steelton Municipal Hall for the residents to take a look at. Uh, we're going to do it as we did in the city, which would allow, um, anyone who wants a smaller totter to request that, uh, or even two smaller totters, if they'd rather have that than one large totter, and we're gonna learn from our experience here in the city. And when we send out the initial billing, we're going to, uh, include a welcome letter with all that contact information, but also, uh, begin the process of asking them, asking each resident what they want in advance. So we'll try and customize it, so everyone's happy, and, um, we would, uh, anticipate the conversion to totters to correspond with the, um, adoption of the long-term agreement, all of which is, is basically slated for the end of the summer.
Okay, and, uh, then just with the rates at Lakswama, since there is a difference in what the City of Harrisburg pays and, uh, Doff, anyone else in Doffin County pays, could we just explain how we're gonna make sure that that stays separate?
That is a good point. Uh, so, for the benefit of the public, uh, while, um, uh, Steelton would be paying, uh, a residential rate that is a little bit less than, uh, the cities, they start at $25 a month, $75 a quarter, we pay whatever it is, the 32, 23.
34, 32, 34.
We, yeah, we have to pay, uh, $195 as a tipping fee for city trash. Steelton, uh, would only pay $85 a ton as a tipping fee, so they're actually, uh, it will actually cost us, and we would, these are the fees that we would be paying Lakswama for Steelton trash, which would be segregated from our trash. It would be mixed to separate truck, separate route directly to the incinerator, uh, but that is going to cost us less to dispose of, significantly less than dispose of, than city trash. So that's why, um, the rates aren't, uh, exactly.
Okay, all right, yeah, I just wanted that out there for the public, so that our Steelton residents knew that they weren't gonna be, uh, you know, built at a higher rate, and Harrisburg residents understood why there would be any difference in, in those two. Uh, so, lastly, is there any additional questions from any council members, Council President?
Yes. Uh, you spoke of the disposal fee being paid by the City of Harrisburg. Uh, we're paying it on the first interim agreement, intergovernmental agreement right now, but will we be paying that each time we, we solidify this agreement?
Sure, just like the Republic was paying them directly as well. They were collecting the fee for collection and disposal, just like we do.
Okay.
And then they are responsible to make sure that, um, Lakswama gets the funding.
So what is the municipal bond coverage? What is the cost of the municipal bond?
Yeah, we're still working through the bond, that's why, we're, there's two things. We think the actual performance bond will come with the intergovernmental agreement that comes down in September or, or late August, and we're working out a security negotiation, which we're still working out. Um, you know, we have, the agreement says, I think in paragraph 12, the parties will find a mutually agreeable manner to secure the contract. Essentially, that means that for some reason we could not perform, and they had to pay for that out of Steelton money, that they're covered. That's really what the security is, and so we're trying to work through that. And one suggestion is to simply do what we did with Lakswama, which is take a doll, a greed dollar amount and segregate it as essentially a kind of account that we can demonstrate, you know, with a, with a, with a bank statement, that that money is here, designated only for Steelton in case of this. And that would just be, so it wouldn't be any money the city would be spending, but it would be setting it aside until we have a bond with a new agreement in the fall. And then that agreement, we have to figure out whether we can get a multi-year agreement, a multi-year bond that would be more attractive financially than a-
According to how, what the ordinance is, the agreement-
Yes, they'd wanna see the ordinance, they'd wanna see the compliance portion, they'd wanna see what our other financial histories are, uh, to get the bond. And so with, it is, it is a very specific, uh, requirement. We're dealing with, um, our brokers at Marsh, who's our, our insurance broker, and they have specific department, um, that we're in negotiations with about what we need. They came back with a series of somewhat technical questions, not surprisingly, uh, based on other bonding history that we have, and that's a longer discussion than filling out an application.
And this would be a separate line item in our budget, to identify the monies that we get from Steelton?
It would be a different revenue stream and a different expenditure stream. I'll leave the technical side to the finance office, but it would be both. I mean, so there would be, it would be, it would have to be segregated for audit purposes, uh-
Sure, so we can identify it as well-
Right.
-to see with the accountant. All right, so ahead.
Okay, all right, and then Steelton, and just, Steelton does not have any, uh, the additional agreements like we have with Lakswama, with a certain amount of trash we have to provide, no put or pay, so it's just, okay. All right, any other questions? And, uh, without that, I'll, uh, ask that Resolution 42 be placed on the agenda, um, for a vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Majors.
Thank you.
And that's at the special legislative session-
At the special legislative session, following this meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in the middle who has a public comment? Anyone to my left? Okay, and ask for an adjournment, please?
Some moves.
Second? Thank you. Meeting is, uh, the work session is adjourned.